Tonight's meeting is basically to sit down and talk a little bit about things going in the city. And we have engagement services that are downtown right now. The commission has made a commitment to move the engagement center out of where it presently sits to somewhere else. There are three sites that are available, and that's the three sites we're looking at. We're going to have the discussion about it. And this is kind of like a neighborhood meeting. We like to let people vocalize what they're thinking or what they think about what's going on. But what's critical to decision making is what are we presently doing? And what do we intend on doing with what we're going to do in the future? So there is a lot of thought. All these people have thought about it. A lot of people in the team have thought about it. Brenda's been working on this for about, what, 13 months, 14 months? And we really just would like to encourage thoughtful discussion tonight and have a discussion about what we're thinking about going forward. Homelessness, mental health illness, addiction is a big part of our country right now. It's a lot of issues that a lot of different areas have. We're encouraged. We have some ideas where we think we can make some impacts and make some rational, reasonable decisions of what to do in the future. So I'm going to turn it over to Brenda Derrick. She's our assistant administrator, and she's going to lead it off with our panel. And we're going to have a good discussion. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. This is a great turnout, and I am happy to see everyone here today. I just want to provide a little bit of history of how we are at the location and how we are where we're at today. So back in January, the mayor, through his mayor meetings, built a relationship with Bloomberg Associates, the philanthropic part of Bloomberg. They go around and assist mayors. And so he had been working with Bloomberg Associates on what can we be doing with the engagement center? What should it be? Where is the right location? And so last January, we had them present a brown bag to the city commission along with city staff. And there we looked at some different criteria we were looking at as different facilities became available. So some of the criteria we looked at was walkable to downtown. We wanted it to be about 20,000 square feet, open floor plan, one level, have some outdoor space, and then some financial feasibility quickly to renovate, and just minimal to the abutting neighbors. So during the legislative session, we did work on some potential funding opportunities which could maybe assist with that relocation of the engagement center. Unfortunately, that did not materialize. But throughout the year, we have had different building owners present some potential sites to the city. And so when you're looking for a one-level building about 20,000 square feet, there aren't a lot of them available in the area we're looking at. So as sites would come in, we evaluated it against the criteria of walkable to key amenities, immediate access to transit, location in downtown periphery rather than right in the center core, can it fit desired programs, can we move in quickly, and then looking also at acquisition cost and renovation. So last Monday, our city commission did start the process to consider alternate locations for the engagement center. On the screen, you will see the map showing three potential sites. So currently available, we would have 610 North University, 720 14th Street North, and 2001 First Avenue North. In addition to discussing locations, I want to give everyone some insight to what happens at the engagement center. We have about 20 different partners that come to the engagement center to work with our participants. So tonight, we'll have Jan Eliason in the middle here with Harm Reduction, with Fargo Cast Public Health, talking. And then, starting from the left, we have Kristin Frank with Rape and Abuse Crisis Center. We have Marie Canodel, Better Together North Dakota Care Coordination and Peer Supports. And then we have Jan. Next, we have Beth Wilson with Presentation Partners in Housing. And then we have Jasmine Vaschek with Southeast Human Service Center, Mental and Behavioral Health. And then lastly, we have Kim Seeb with Family Healthcare. So I'll hand it over to Jan to do a little, to give you some insight to what they're doing at the engagement center, and we'll have each one give a little spiel about what they're working on during the day.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. The engagement center plays a vital role in the lives of people who are unhoused because it provides immediate access, low-barrier access, to a number of different resources and services that they haven't always been able to access. That includes really a lot of basic needs, items such as food, hygiene items, showers, lockers, access to laundry facilities, and a lot of things that they don't have outside of the engagement center. Our staff spend a lot of time just trying to connect people to the right resources, getting to know people so that we know we can connect them to the right resources. And we also provide a considerable amount of education to the folks that we serve, just about where they can go for this. Our biggest thing is just getting to know people so they can tell us what it is that they think they need to move beyond their current situation. The providers that come in, of which we have some out there and some up here, and I feel really lucky to have the network of partners that we do, they provide everything from resources and services related to housing, mental health, substance use disorder, I mean, everything, employment, all of it. So I guess that's, right now, we're serving about 90 people a day. I can say that. And we're open Monday through Friday. We're no longer open on weekends. Maybe that's something that we can change down the road, but for now, that's where we're at. And we're excited about opportunities that a new building will bring and what it will allow us to do in terms of provision of services and having more services on site at one time, and just having a building that's designed to be an engagement center, a drop-in center. So we can't do any of it, of course, without our partners. I'm thrilled that everybody's here, and I'll turn it over to Frankie.
Hello, all. My name is Frankie. Thank you. My name is Frankie. I'm an advocate at the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center. I've been doing outreach at the DEC since, well, it's been about a little over a year and a half. And it has been just an incredible experience. Being able to connect with this population of people is something that is so incredibly near and dear to my heart. It has been life-changing for me, and trying not to cry. But we are the point of contact for so many people that have faced abuse throughout their lifetime. So we represent those that have been affected by domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, which is a very large problem within our community, even though most people don't recognize that. And so me going there is being able to connect with people on a human level, to create a safe space for them to be able to share their experiences, which we've all likely had experiences, and to make those real human connections. We offer basic hygiene items, crisis intervention. We do education. I offer a lot of emotional support, and we also have counseling services. My hope for the future and the new building will be something to really create a dynamic of having education for people and to offer groups, because we're not doing that right now at the engagement center. We just don't have the space or the capacity to do that, and that's something that I'm very excited about in the future. We just also, it's a space to come together in oneness, and it's something that I have seen so much progress with the people that I've worked with, with the staff. Having community partners like this is something that is so important, because we can't do things on our own, but together, I feel like we can do so much. And seeing the population of people that are unhoused, we see a larger increase of victimization and vulnerability, and being able to engage together in a specific place where they have access to so many resources is just life-changing for them. So.
She's a tough one to follow. Marie from Better Together ND. And I have some staff here today. We're care coordinators for the state, or we work for the state. We do care coordination, peer support, 1959. And the DEC has been instrumental for us the last three and a half years. Our care coordinators are able to work closely with the staff at the DEC, connect with people who we otherwise probably wouldn't be able to find. We help people with employment, housing. We help them get set up with providers. We'll help them get on Medicaid, SNAP. We're helping them, we're meeting them where they are and connecting them to services. What we're doing is we're basically taking them from crisis and giving them an opportunity so that they can thrive in the community and that they're not circling into jails, prisons, hospitals, things like that. So we're providing them the support, and we've really found the DEC to be a place where we do outreach. It's a place where we know we can collaborate with staff at the DEC, and it's just been very, very valuable for the people that would otherwise fall through the cracks. So we appreciate the work that they do, and I know it's vice versa.
Does it work if I'm back here? I ask that. It really does? Okay, wonderful. Beth Wilson from Presentation Partners in Housing and our Housing Navigation Program. I think it was towards the end of 2020 or the beginning of 2021 when Jan Eliason from Harm Reduction and Kim Seeb from Family Healthcare's Homeless Health Clinic had talked about that there was an opportunity, since they were serving a lot of the same folks and COVID was really at its height, like they were going to combine forces and have this building where they could serve so many of the folks that we have been trying to serve for a very long time in this low-barrier environment. And my first question to Jan, if you recall, was where is Housing Navigation's office going to be in this new building? Like, you've considered that, right? Because this is just a natural fit for us. So just very briefly, Housing Navigation began as a pilot project in 2016 in our community to see if Housing First truly worked with individuals who, in our community, had been considered, you know, some of the hardest folks to house. There was a lot of rhetoric happening that people were too addicted, too mentally ill, too sick, too noncompliant to be housed. And there was, so this was a population that we really wanted to work with and see, does this Housing First intervention work? And what we have found is absolutely it does. You know, after nine years, I think we can confidently say we have housing retention rates of 82% to 90%. And I'm not just trying to talk about our program, but what this means with the DEC is it's a vital partnership for us because we are working with folks, intentionally targeting folks who have barriers to accessing other services. They may, so I think even that, the very next day after Jan and I talked about where Housing Navigation's office would be, I had to call and ask, like, is it open yet? It was not. Because we had an apartment showing with an individual, a mom, that morning, and she didn't have anywhere to shower. She didn't have clean clothes, and she did not want to go and meet with a landlord. She said it would just be humiliating for her. And I agreed. I wouldn't want to go talk to a landlord and try to get an apartment out of shower and laundry. So even just starting there, and I think, I can't emphasize enough that the DEC provides life-saving services. And how that relates into, you know, our overall community conversation on Housing First is that in order for us to house folks, we need them to still be alive by the time that we can find them a landlord, that we can provide that service. And that's what the DEC does. It connects people. Housing Navigation having our offices there, it allows us to just get some, you know, we've had questions from folks who are curious about Housing First and if it works for truly anybody, and asked about, well, what about the people who say they don't want housing, who are resistant to services? Well, it's helped us a ton. We've been able to see from four years of working there that people see us then. The folks that we serve have seen us around the DEC, even if we are not necessarily, like, working a shift. They've seen us, and they've seen, they've told us, well, you house so-and-so. He's been around since practically before I was born homeless, and you guys got him housing, so maybe you could help me. It's essential for building this community of folks and keeping them safe and connected during this housing process. So I would say the DEC is very housing-focused, and it's a big honor on our part to have played a role in it, to continue to play a role in it. About 82% of folks that we serve in Housing Navigation have been or are currently connected to the DEC services.
You set a very high bar, Beth.
Oh, no!
It's great. I am Jasmine Vaschek with Southeast Human Service Center. We provide behavioral health services, mental health, and substance use. I, myself, have spent four years doing homeless outreach, and so I became very connected to the DEC and their mission, and it was like family, being there, part of their team. But at Southeast, our goal is that our services go beyond the four walls of our clinic, knowing that everybody needs support wherever they're at, and the DEC has allowed us to do that. Our staff can go there weekly. We're, I think we're there about four days a week. We're trying to get there five days a week because we know that sometimes that's the safest space where people are, and we hope to bring the support to them and connect with them in a meaningful way. The staff there have done a phenomenal job building rapport with all the guests that they serve, and that's really an asset to us because that can be a warm connection, and we can become a trusted person much faster than if we're just meeting somebody maybe on the street. We do have a downtown engagement team. While they're kind of all over the community, they do provide a significant amount of connection downtown, and that just makes our services more accessible to everybody. It's hard to admit that, you know, mental health is still stigmatized these days, but we recognize that. And so when we can be at the DEC, make those connections, that eliminates a barrier of people having to take that next step of coming to Southeast, and that it can be kind of a scary situation walking into an unknown building, and we recognize that. So connecting with them in a place such as the DEC is vital to that. While our staff are providing those behavioral health services, we also recognize that a big piece of people's well-being is those essential services, having a shower, having a snack, having a place to keep your things. All of those are the foundation before somebody can really invest in improving their mental health and their substance use. I want to just share a little highlight, I would say, of recent. Our engagement team worked very close with the DEC staff to house a gentleman just last week who hasn't had a place of his own for the past 10 years. And so I think that's just a great example of the work that is being done there and how we also rely on the facility to make those connections with the clients, and their staff are a vital role in the work we do.
And I am Kim Seeb with Homeless Health Services, which is a program of Family Healthcare Center. We are a federally qualified community health center, and we get federal funding to provide healthcare, primary care, to individuals who are maybe experiencing housing or making the transition, or homelessness, or making that transition to housing. Been around for a long time, so I have a lot of things going in my head. But when, way back when, you know, the dream of having a drop-in center has been a community dream for many years. It was identified a long time ago that this was something that could really benefit our community and our homeless population. So when Jan approached me about being a partner in this entity, I was, to say the least, thrilled at the opportunity to give it a shot. Since housing is healthcare, it's such a good fit for us to be there and to be talking about ending homelessness and providing services that can help people make that transition and get stabilized in housing. One of the things we talk a lot about is getting people into housing and that initial excitement of getting someone off the street who's been there for 10 years. But having been around as long as I have, I also have a handful of people that I have worked with for 18 years or more who have been housed for many, many years, who still utilize services at the DEC to help them stabilize their housing. The DEC is a safe, dignified place for people to go. The beauty of our service, of our continuum of care, is that not everybody has to go there if they don't want to, but we're there when they need us. One of the really important things that we've talked about for years is the lockers. We talk about the fact that there are lockers there, and the lockers mean so much to people because they can keep their belongings safe. When you look at it from a medical perspective, many of our patients would take their medications, lose them, lose their backpacks, have them stolen, whatever, and we'd have to replace those medications. Now they have a safe place to keep them. So we're seeing a lot less of the, you know, the issues of trying to provide steady, consistent primary care to someone who's on the street and trying to make a difference in their health outcomes because we have resources that can do that. Hygiene, it's so basic, but for some individuals who have issues, hygiene is so important. Clean clothes, showers are just vital as a component of their healthcare. So our partnership with the DEC is, I think, one of the highlights of my career doing this. We've seen where, you know, when we were all separate and scattered throughout the city, you know, one of our federal requirements is that we are where the patients are. And so we used to have to do outreach all over the community. We still do some of that, but at least now, we're all in the same building, and we can walk people. When we say to someone, are you ready for treatment today? We can walk them to talk to someone about that. Are you ready to talk about housing? We can go with them to talk to someone about that. Just the positive aspects of having a community center like this make such a difference. I was thinking about this on the way over here today, and, you know, I was thinking, such a difference in the service delivery. You know, we used to have people who would come to the clinic, and then we'd have to somehow figure out how to get them out to Sanford or to Southeast or to Rape and Abuse. And, you know, that involved them walking with their belongings for hours on end every day. Now we don't have to do that, and they don't have to carry their belongings. We have a safe place for them to keep them. We have an environment where everyone there, including the participants, understand that the people who are coming in are coming in there because they have issues. And so trying to be respectful and helpful to each other as well as to us, it's just been a great experience. Our clinic serves about 1,200 different individuals a year, and that has gone up because of our participation in the DEC. We are actually reaching more people because of our location at the DEC. So I'm looking forward to a move where we are, where our building is designed specifically for what we're trying to do, can make it easier. I, you know, if I were one of you sitting out there and I had strong thoughts about the DEC but have never been there, I would encourage you to look for volunteer opportunities to come on over and experience what a day in the DEC is like. I will tell you, it is one of the funniest things you'll ever experience and one of the most gut-wrenching, heartbreaking things you'll ever encounter. So as you can tell, I'm a big advocate for this type of programming, and I hope we can come up with a location that serves everyone the best we can. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kim. Thanks, everyone. So as you can see, we talk about a low-barrier point of access and how critical that is for people to get access to an extensive and diverse array of services. And again, without all of those, without all of the different types of programs that come in, we couldn't provide the really personalized case management and care that people need to, you know, pursue stability in housing and whatever else they've identified as needing. So thanks, you guys, for being here and for everything else that you do. That means this is an opportunity now for people to ask some questions. We'll do our best to answer those. We have a couple of, sure, sure. You don't have to ask me.
So if we can, I just want to circle back to the map a little bit more and talk about, you know, how did the map come about? So you'll see there's the blue area that is the core downtown area, and then you have that pink area around there, which is kind of that preferred location where we've been looking at. The 610 North University and 720 14th Street North, those are both along that 7th Avenue North, just west of university. Those are buildings that are for lease or for sale, so those are our options there. And then at the 2001 First Avenue North, we understand it's a little further out from the downtown, but we still feel we've done a few tours, and we still feel it's a viable location, and that building will be available for lease. And so those are the three sites we're looking at, and we're continuing to look at that financial impact so we can look at what those costs would look like. We've also been working with private partners to look at potentially donating to the relocation of the site also. And so those are all the things we're working on behind the scenes. So with that, we would like to open it up for any questions you have, you know, what you can expect if you are in the vicinity and they would come, if one of the locations picked happened to be where you're at, any of those types of questions. Also, any questions on location or anything that you have, we'd be happy to answer. And then we have a couple, we have two people that will be going around with mics. We ask that you raise your hand. They'll come over to you and take your question to be answered, and we'll go from there.
So my name is Holly, and we have Maddie over there. We're going to do our best to get to everyone, but like was mentioned, there are a lot of folks in the audience tonight. We think, we want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to share their comment or ask their questions, so we do just remind audience members to please try to keep it brief. So Maddie, we'll let you go first over there. Please just raise your hand. Thank you.
Working? Okay. Christopher Cohn, Fargo resident. So I attended the meeting in January where Bloomberg Associates presented their eight locations that they had analyzed with a chart on various characteristics. None of them had addresses. The chart, the map that was shown for it had eight unlabeled dots. So we never found out where those locations were, and they had, location six and seven were the ones that were recommended. I don't know which two those were. So in the current proposal, two of those dots, the ones you have for locations one and two up by University Drive and 7th Avenue North, matched two red dots that were on the Bloomberg Associates map. Are those the ones that they recommended? We don't know. I did do an open records request for any reports that Bloomberg Associates put in, and the city told me there are none. There is no study. There were no reports, and there were no, there was nothing paid for this consultation. These consultants came from New York City. I find it hard to believe that they did not ask for any remuneration for travel or anything else. So I feel like we're being left out. City residents, we want to be part of this decision. I want the best thing to happen for this population that's being served. And so it's really important, if we relocate it, to get the best location. And I also note that the third location over here at 2001 First Avenue North is far outside the area that's been determined that it needs to be, because that's over a half an hour walk, for one thing. I mean, the only good thing about it is that it's close to the two shelters, but it's far away from everything else. So think about government appointment. So think about government appointments, going to family healthcare, going to the bus station, going to restaurants. Homeless people go to restaurants regularly. So this is, I think is a form of discrimination to kick them out of downtown. They, like anybody else, can be in any part of the city. It's, and, and what we know is that the business community downtown is behind wanting to remove DEC from downtown. That's not been stated and yet it's present at all the meetings and in fact, this presentation material even says that one of the pros of this 2001 First Avenue is that, that it's located far away as the business community wanted it. And it has a mystery price, so we don't know if it's for sale or not. So if we choose it, then we might end up with a big purchase price later on. That doesn't sound like a good idea. I mean, it's, I think it's a great building, but, you know, so what, you know, what I'm concerned about is the process here that's been used for this. It's been a closed process, it's been opaque and none of us are allowed to, to know things about it. Why not? You know, it's with our input, a variety of diverse inputs from the people of the city that we can get the best result, I think. We all have legitimate concerns, we all have different things to contribute.
So I'll, I can answer some of those questions. So Bloomberg Associates does have, have a philanthropic part to them and they work with mayors and assist them. And so you're correct, they do everything pro bono and do not charge us. They come to visit, they've been visiting the DEC. When we had camps along the river, they were visiting the camps along the river, just trying to understand what was happening in Fargo. And so they were back in January and did the presentation. It's, it's been quiet ever since. We've been meeting with them monthly, just kind of talking about where we're at. We are working with the legislature to just see if there was any opportunity there, so that took us through till May or, May-June. And then as we keep evaluating, right, sites come off, sites come on. This is where we're at today on where those three sites that would be available. You know, today we have about 20,000 square feet, but it's split up in three different levels and it's really compartmentalized. So there's not a lot of open space, so if we can figure out a way to find a building that has about that 20,000 square feet on one floor, that allows us more accessibility to watch what's happening outside the building along with a little more open space and it provides the opportunities for those that maybe don't, aren't comfortable with a lot of people, maybe gives them some room to have some quiet space. So there really aren't a lot of buildings within here that are about that square footage. And so currently today, and maybe some more will pop up after this meeting, but right now, these are really the sites that rise to the top. And as of Monday, really Monday kicked off the start of looking at how do we relocate the Engagement Center and what options do we have available? And so that's really what's starting this process along with this meeting tonight. So, next question.
Hi, my name is Jordan and I run a licensed daycare just two blocks north of the 720 14th Street address. We already have a lot of foot traffic in that area and we have a lot of police presence as is. How can you guys guarantee the safety of like children in that area? It's a residential area full of college students, a licensed daycare is right there, you got the college library just right up 12th there. And based on what you guys are telling me, that this is a troubled population, unfortunately they're in unforeseen circumstances, but some are mental health, some are drug addicts. How can you guarantee the safety and well-being of this area of residential people? Like we have yards, we have kids, we have pets, we have college students learning for an education and this population being up in this area seems like, like it might be That seems to be the one, one location that I personally don't think would be ideal, being that I'm in that area and I run a daycare with children. It's not even, it's like a three-minute walk from my house. Like, that's pretty problematic in my opinion. I really firmly believe, even though it's outside of the central location of everything that they need, I do think the 200, 2001 First Avenue location would be more ideal. It's right next to the shelters for sleeping, bathing, having their stuff. And it's also right next to the police station, so if they need help and resources, they're right there. I don't know where the bus stops are in that area, but I'm sure that this, that could be a solution for the city too, for transportation, is to create a bus stop for that population. But ideally, I don't think the 720 14th Street would be a, a good spot for the, for the location to be. And that's all I have to say.
I think that all three locations, just really quick, come with pros and cons and I do understand that people are going to have concerns because there's a lot of unknowns out there, there's a lot of what you've heard out there. All I could say today is wherever we end up, we'll do the best we can to provide services and have a welcoming environment so that the people who tend to spill out onto the street now feel more comfortable coming indoors. And I really believe that, that we're able to do that. So we can have expectations of those folks that we serve in the community. The community allows us to do the work that we do, so having expectations is, is really critical. I think any location that we go to, I can list all, all the pros, but I know that we're going to have to talk about the cons as well.
A comment I would like to make is that, I, we can't guarantee anybody's safety anywhere. It is, like you said, you already have a lot of police presence, you have a lot of foot traffic. If we do this right and we build this to match our dreams, the idea is, is that we would keep, we would have that center functioning and doing what it's supposed to do and those people wouldn't be out and about in your neighborhood. No, I forgot. Oh, one story, I don't know if I can tell this story, but I'm going to. There is a, there is a business that shares our parking lot with where we currently are. We have it set up with that business, so if they are having issues because we're right there, that they can text us and we will respond right away. So the last I heard, and we get very little, very little communication from them, but the last I heard, the longest response time we had dealing with something they were having an issue with was four minutes. You don't have that with law enforcement, four-minute response necessarily. And you also, if we're not there, when you do have this foot traffic and police presence, you don't have us to call to help with that. I personally, like I said, I, I've done this for many, many years. The narrative that having the DEC in your neighborhood just increases the danger is a false narrative in my opinion. I, I don't have statistics or numbers, crime numbers or who's doing what, but I know from my experience of working with thousands of individuals who have been facing homelessness. Just like in every other population, there is a percentage of people who are just bad people, who will just do bad things. The majority of those people are so broken and so desperate for help that they are not dangerous people and they are not going to hurt children. I, I told a story after, or before I came to Monday's city commission meeting, I walked out of the DEC and there's a group of people in the back acting all silly and whatever and I walked out and I said, hey, what's going on? They were trying to revive a dragonfly. And, and I don't mean to dismiss your concerns because I, if I were in the neighborhood, I would have the same concerns, just because of what I've heard and what, what is out there. But I also, if I were in your neighborhood, I would also feel a little more comfortable than maybe you do about having them there because I know the stories.
Can I also say something really quick? What I have seen and what I know is that when we can engage people and they trust us and we can build community in a safe container for them to share and to be, we see healing happen. And I have seen that so many times at the Engagement Center. And as an agency, we are also a barrier. We are a barrier for victims to come in and seek our services. And so when we can do outreach in the community and we have space to build something, that says so much. So, and I also understand concerns. I'm a mom, I get it, but I have seen so many times just beautiful relationships blossom at the DEC. Just walking here tonight, I mean, I hear my name from down the block all the time, Frankie, right? And it's, it's, it's the relationships that we build, the time that we put in, we are investing in human beings and we're just seeing something wonderful happen.
I would just like to add one small thing echoing what Kim said, you know, we, we can't guarantee certain things, that's just not realistic. But I think there's an element here that I would like to remember is that those at access services at the DEC feel a sense of ownership over it. That's a safe space, they recognize that and they are not immune to the turmoil that is going on over this discussion. They're well-informed of that themselves. And so wherever the DEC is relocated to, just knowing that those at access service there do have that sense of ownership, they want it to be a place that continues to operate so they can continue to get the services that they've been receiving.
I want to know how important it is to have a downtown Engagement Center. Like, I'd like to hear from you, how important is the downtown aspect of it? I, you know, I hear you, people don't want, people don't want homeless people downtown. Okay, so now you're going to set up in, in neighborhoods, people don't want homeless people in, in neighborhoods. Where are they supposed to, where, where do you want, where do you want people? I mean, to, to me, it makes sense to have a downtown Engagement Center. And if there are no suitable locations downtown, I wonder what the urgency is to get out of, of the current building. Is there a reason you, you wouldn't want to just stay there until a viable option comes up? Because all I've heard about these three is, is none, none of them are, none of them are good enough, none of them are safe enough, none of them are far enough away from your neighborhood, none of them are far enough away from, from, from your business.
Thanks for your comments. We have been really intentional about making sure that wherever we end up, that people still have access to us. If we're not, you know, low barrier and accessible to folks, we're not going to be able to do the job that we show up every day to do. So I appreciate your comments. It's, downtown is where the people are and, and, you know, I've been working downtown for a very long time and responding to calls about individuals downtown for a very long time. So, you know, they're not down there necessarily because we're there. We are there though because they're downtown.
All right, next question over here.
Hi, I feel like this is, we're all here because we have concerns. We're here also because we care very much about our community and the DEC is doing an amazing, look at the passion, listen to the passion. But we have concerns because of the elephant in the room. There are people who behave badly and they put other people at risk and they make people afraid to go places. I personally know four people, I'm, I'm nobody. I'm nobody. I don't know hardly anybody in Fargo, although I've lived here for 35 years. I know four people who've been assaulted downtown by people who are unhoused. That's scary to me. I also have a preschool, a school, one minute from the 610 North University. Almost daily, I am walking around the building looking for things that are unsafe or safe. I've had to approach people who are laying in my driveway saying, I'm sorry, you can't stay here, it's pick-up and drop-off time. Parents stay in their cars because they're afraid, because they don't know if that person has a weapon or not. And I think we have to acknowledge, this is a responsible group of people who want to do the best for people out of passion and love, but there's a lot of people at stake here, a lot of businesses, children, families, neighborhoods. All of you love this. Would you bring your child to your work for the day? Would you move next door to the DEC and welcome folks into your neighborhood? I hope so, but I'm saying, there's a reality that we're not addressing here. It's a Shangri-La, there's a best practice, there's an ideal. If we were going to do this right, would we pick a place right next to a noisy railroad station? Is that a peaceful place for somebody who's unhoused, who may have mental health issues, who may have drug addiction issues, who may have suicidal tendencies? It's terrifying to me. I myself have mental health issues. I know what I need to take care of myself when I'm in that dark space. It's not a noisy place where there's very little outdoor space, windows, light, peacefulness, plants, gardens, nature. That corridor is a one-way? The hospital you have identified does not have an emergency room. There are, there's, I think, we've got to start looking long-term. I'm not saying we have the funds to do the ideal, but I don't know that we should be saying, this isn't working, let's put a Band-Aid on it and go here and get through the next few years and then see what happens. I wish that we could come up with something that truly serves people with dignity and peace and gives them the services they need, but also recognizes the needs of the neighborhood and the community. And I applaud you for your work, I love your work, but I think that we can't have rosy glasses about it either. And I'm sure this is an unpopular message, but I'm just saying, I, I've, I've seen both sides of the coin and I think that maybe we are moving too fast on this. Thank you.
I, I, sorry. I, I would, I appreciate your comments, I really do. A couple of things that I would say is, again, if you've already got it in your neighborhood, one of the benefits is us being there to address it and to keep it out of your neighborhood. Are we going to be able to keep your, your businesses and your, and your children safe all the time? No. But are we going to bust our butts trying? Absolutely. And if we do this right, again, the way we're, we're anticipating it, those people won't be in your neighborhood, we'll be housing them, we'll be engaged with them, they'll be engaged with us. The, the whole goal of a downtown Engagement Center or an Engagement Center is to get people off the street into services and work on housing. Can I just make one other comment? I, I have a daughter that grew up coming to the clinic with me. To this day, my daughter, she'd lived in New Orleans for nine years, she knew a large percentage of the homeless population there on her way to work. My daughter's never been injured by someone who was homeless. No, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have rose-colored glasses on. I go in this building every day, I, I deal with people every day. I get that there are concerns, absolutely. Jan and I kind of have the same philosophy about, you know, calling people on their crap, you know? If you're misbehaving, I'm going to call you on it, I'm going to talk to you about it. Like I said, I've been doing this most of my adult life and I've never been assaulted, I've never been hurt doing this work. And I, and I used to do involuntary commitments to the state hospital. There's, you know, there, there is no doubt that there is an element of danger and there is an element of people misbehaving, but the majority of the people that we serve are not what you're seeing assaulting people downtown. One question I have, and this is going to be unpopular, but how do you, how do you know the four individuals who assaulted the people were homeless? How do you identify a homeless person? What does a homeless person look like? Does it look like me? Does it look like, like any of us? I mean, you, you can't assume because someone's carrying a backpack, has mental health issues or substance use issues and are misbehaving, that they don't have a home to go to.
And also I'd like to say, like, we have, or I say we, because I'm part, but the DEC does have mobile outreach and so they are doing their job and they are out in the community and attending individuals that may need help. And so I certainly would, would hope that being closer... And so I certainly would hope that being closer to that neighborhood, that things would change.
I've been a resident of the Fargo, the Roosevelt neighborhood for about 22 years. I was on the original group of people who established the Roosevelt Neighborhood Organization. I've been on a city panel, a minor city panel, and have been working for all that time to make the Roosevelt neighborhood better, more suitable for families, preserve our vintage housing. I want to quickly follow up with that gentleman's comment about why not downtown? And I think it's important to know that a very wealthy investor who's also a governor controls the downtown, and that's why we can't, you know, we have to get out of there, right? Now, my other comment is I want all of my neighbors to see what's happening here. The city has turned its back on the Roosevelt neighborhood and other parts of North Fargo so many times over that 20 years. And what they're doing is, they'll be able to say later, after it ends up in a dangerous area next to your daycare center, they'll say, you had a chance to comment, and that's all we're obligated to do. And so I want you all to understand that. And I forgot the other point that I wanted to make. Oh, I'll end with a question. Oh, I remembered it. So, the other part that's underneath all of this, if either address 610 or 720 are chosen, that will lead to continued degradation of our housing values. And the city's been trying to redline Roosevelt neighborhood for many years so that their developer friends can come in, build student housing, and generate a lot of wealth by destroying our vintage homes. So I just want everyone to understand what this is about. I think unhoused people need to have a place that's safe and services for them, but this is really about continuing the insult and degradation of the Roosevelt neighborhood.
Hello. I'm from the Engagement Center. How scary am I? Right, how I ended up homeless was I subletted an apartment, come down here for school. And going to school, I ended up losing my apartment, I ended up homeless. And because of the Engagement Center in places, I was able, I'm a host, I'm a host, I'm off the street. I'm not violent. I'm actually, you know, I can speak for quite a few of them. You know, they are respectful if you respect them. But if you go walking by people in the neighborhood and you think, and you smuggle them or whatever, they're broken homes. They're broken homes, they don't have family, they don't know what stability is. And that's what the Engagement Center is there for, is to teach them the stability. You know, I understand you guys' property value goes down and everything like that, you know, and the pride, I can't understand why you're concerned about your kids, but more than likely, when it comes to the children, they're looking at them because they don't got theirs. The story is so deep. And I love Fargo Morehead, I love that invest in your valley. I love it. So, you know, I love that you guys are here, and you guys are trying to figure it out. And maybe the move ain't ready, maybe it's not time, but the right building will come.
Hi, Olivia, Fargo resident. I have a quick question before I continue the rest of my question. I don't know if you can answer this tonight. Will the warming center be happening this year, like, in that building? Or will it be in the public health building still? Will it be happening at all? Do we know? Because that's relevant to my question.
It's not likely it'll be in the public health building because that space is occupied by another division right now. I believe that wherever we are, may very well be where we end up providing winter warming services.
Through the deck? Okay. So, that makes less sense to me, why you would move it when there's shelters over on that side where people can sleep and get warm and they're able to stay in the shelters. And there's this whole other section that you're calling the preferred area where the deck currently is, and it sounds like you have a good relationship with your next-door neighbors and they're working well with you. I'm just currently having an issue understanding why we're moving in the first place. And my question is, have you spoken with, I appreciate you speaking just now, have you spoken with people who visit the deck and are currently experiencing homelessness and what their views are on this? Because I have, and I'm curious if you have.
I really appreciate that question. We talk with the people we serve as often as possible. You know, the things that I know and the things that motivate me to try to do this or that in the community, that's informed by the people that we serve. You know, they've taught me an awful lot about what their needs are. On the way over here, I talked to people about what was happening over here, and they're aware, they're aware that, you know, there's a lot of things at risk, they're aware that we could end up somewhere else. I think that, I can speak for every agency up here, we are very committed to hearing what the folks that we serve have to say and what they want. Everything we do is informed by that. And no, not all of them want us to move, I can tell you. So, yeah, I should finish with that. Some feel that, you know, they face so many challenges in terms of transportation or walking everywhere, that it'll just be one more place that they have to walk, so.
My name is Carla Rose Hansen. I represent this district in the North Dakota Legislature. You talked about walking, Jan. My question has to do with access to transit. That was listed as one of the criteria as you're evaluating your different sites. Can you tell the group if all three available properties have access to a bus route?
So, 2001st Avenue North has a bus route just to the north of it, and then 610 University, the bus route is on University. And I do think 720, if I remember correctly, that would have to come over to University. So that's a little further from the bus route, just north of it, on University.
Can I just comment on one thing about that? So currently at Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, we are not able to cab for crisis appointments to advocacy, and that has to do with funding. So transit is really, really important for our clients. A lot of them can't get to us, and so they are falling through the cracks. So for us to be able to outreach and go there is so incredibly important. Transportation is really hard for our folks.
Hi, Sarah Lillistrand. I own Holland's Home and Garden on 420 University Drive. Could you tell me what the proposed timeline is for the movement of the downtown Engagement Center specifically? And I would also like to know what the ages of each of these buildings are and what the cost of the renovations of each of these buildings will be to make it a downtown Engagement Center? Thank you.
I guess I should keep the mic. So, we just started the process last week. So I don't think we have a timeline. It could go quick, it could take a while. I think it depends on what is the feedback tonight and how do the commissioners feel about the feedback tonight as to what the next steps are. We have some estimated costs. We are walking through all the sites, trying to get a little bit tighter on what those costs would be to renovate. And so we are not there. This is the first step to have input and to talk about the three sites. And we will be visiting with the commissioners after this meeting and seeing what the next step should look like.
Hi, my name is Kay Schwartz-Walter, and I live in downtown Fargo. And we encounter a lot of foot traffic from folks going from the Salvation Army to the New Life Center. And so if you move the deck, where are those folks? How are they, is the Salvation Army going to move too so that they've got a meal plan? Or how is that all going to work? And I want to say that I know that there's a lot of fear about people who are unhoused, who we think are unhoused when we look at them. But we have taken it upon ourselves to welcome them into our neighborhood downtown. When we don't know them, we say hi. We are neighbors to the Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, and I can't say enough good about what you do. We have called a mobile outreach unit for people who have been in crisis across the street. One gentleman was down on his hands and knees, and it was obvious he was in a crisis. And I have the mobile outreach unit on my contact list, and I called them. They were there within minutes. And what just really warmed my heart was seeing those two guys get out of the van and get down on all fours and talk to him and work with him and get him into the unit. So, as much fear as we're hearing about this, there are so many good people that are out there working their butts off to make our community safe and to fight all of this misinformation that's going around. And I applaud each and every one of you for all the work that you're doing, and you have my vote-whatever. I'll just, I support you with everything I have.
I'm Lori Beth Hager. I'm also a state representative, and this is, all three of these sites are in my district. I have walked all these streets, I'm familiar with them. I have driven the streets, so each of the sites I'm familiar with. I'd like to focus specifically today on the 2001st Avenue site, which is basically in an industrial area. Okay? It's being said in the media, or someone has said, oh, it's good because it's close to a police station. I'm not sure that's the message we're trying to send to the people that are living this lifestyle, hopefully for just a few years of their life. I can see that that's the biggest facility, and I appreciate that the extra space will make each of your jobs feel more convenient, and I appreciate everything that each of you do in your areas. The walking area, when you walk, I actually don't, would not walk that area myself. There are areas in my district that are, and I am concerned for the people with daycares that have been in your area, and I understand your concerns and the walkability of each of those areas. And having that in your area, walking by in the street, is an ongoing concern day and night for you when you do live in those areas. I guess I'm going to phrase this as a question. In other places that you've looked at, that the Bloombergs have looked at, are we putting homeless engagement centers in industrial areas? Is that the message that's being done in other places nationwide? And if it is, that's surprising to me, is if that, because it's a big, beautiful building with 33,500 square feet, if that's the reason for it. But I just, is this what's the trend in the nation, is that we push them further away? That walking distance has to be 30 minutes or more. In other parts of the nation, we don't have 30 below, and we do here. So that's some of my concerns. I hope that people making this decision will take in mind, if you do have answers for us that are in the room tonight, I would appreciate that shared with us.
Typically, when looking at sites for an Engagement Center or a diversion center or anything, it's, a number of things are considered, and those primary considerations are access to transportation, public transportation, typically closer to the city center because that tends to be where a lot of services who've been there for a really long time are for people. And so I would say, even in our visits of other places in my travels, they typically are closer to the city center, yes. And if we move it too far away, we're not going to be able to do our job. So I understand, you know, what it is that you're asking.
Hi, my name's Katie, and I am a former harm reduction advocate with the City of Fargo. I was with them for three years when it actually started as COVID in isolation, and into a shelter, and then into the Engagement Center. I am a mom, I'm a single mom, I have two beautiful daughters. I live off 52nd Street. Last month, I had two individuals who tried to break into my house and broke into my neighbor's home. So, I mean, crime happens anywhere, but I understand where you're coming from with the daycare. But you can't stop it. It's going to happen anywhere. The job for me has been very personal. I lost my mom five years ago to an overdose. They didn't have an Engagement Center. They didn't have a system like this, and if they did, she might still be alive. So that's how personal this job is to so many of us, and how personal it can be to all of you in the room. I don't think we talk enough about the success stories. I don't think we get to talk about the reunification that happens. I don't think we get to talk about the participants that we work with and the Engagement Center and Southeast that are on the street with nobody. We come in, and they go through treatment, and then they get a job, and then they get a home, and then they get their babies back. We don't talk about that because the community is so worried about if someone's not wearing shoes and they're dirty, are they going to break into my house? How many of you guys have been affected by homelessness in your family, substance use, alcoholism? There's functioning alcoholics? Why don't they get the same treatment? Every single one of you is one scenario away from being on the streets. But so many of you guys have a family, you have support. I had to work my butt off to get to where I'm at because my family was in substance use. They were in and out of prison. But you have services, you have people up here who are willing to help the most vulnerable and the hardest individuals who have no trust in anyone because their families turn their back on them, or they just went through generational trauma. You don't just grow up one day and decide, I want to be addicted, I want to be homeless. Life happens, and so many people don't think they have options. But the Engagement Center comes in, and you have rape and abuse who's working alongside Jan and her harm reduction advocates. You have Southeast who comes in, gets them on a team where they can get the help that they need. Just today, I work for Better Together, just today, I called mobile outreach for a participant that we both work with. She trusted the harm reduction advocates that showed up a little bit more than me, so they were able to get her into detox. And from there, I'm going to help her get into treatment. The Engagement Center, they help with discharge plans. How many people go to treatment and then get discharged onto the street? That's where the community, the collaboration, that's where all of us come in to try to make that not happen. We want that cycle to be broken. But who else is going to step up? And where else are we going to do it if we don't have a place called the Engagement Center where people can come together and engage and get services?
My name is Lori Baumann, and I'm a resident about a half a mile away from these locations. What I'm hearing from most of you sounds like the discussion is whether we're going to have this Engagement Center or not, and I don't think that's the issue here tonight. We have an Engagement Center. It has its function. I went online before I came here to try to educate myself about that center. There's not much online to read. It doesn't tell your success stories, which would be very helpful to the public. I can say that I have been an advocate for the agencies we have in town, and I have given donations to them to help people rise up from the issues that they have, to make them viable citizens. But if you're talking about putting that in a neighborhood, I understand the concerns because you're talking about servicing 12 because you're talking about servicing twelve hundred people a year and that number will probably rise. It seems like every time Fargo rises to the occasion to house the homeless that we have, that population increases. But I don't want twelve hundred more people walking in my neighborhood. And that, there's people already now that I question. We've always, we've lived right by NDSU, we've always welcomed the college students. But we get to know our neighbors and now I can honestly say there's people that walk through that I don't even know. And we've had to secure things down. We don't leave things out in the open that we used to because it walks away. And I'm not saying it's your people doing that. I'm just saying it's when you don't know who's in your neighborhood and that much more foot traffic, which it's going to be. It, it just, you just don't know who's in your neighborhood.
Can I say something about that? Like what we know with violence is that our vulnerable population is more apt to be victimized than they are to be the abusers. And, yeah.
One of the reasons that we're looking at a new building is the, the people we serve have long histories of trauma and a lot of things that have happened. And the space that we have right now has a lot of walls and a lot of corners and a lot of spots that people can't see around. So we definitely want to move out of the building we're in so that we can find a building that allows us to create an environment that's very welcoming and feels much safer for the folks that we serve. So I do believe that there are people that don't come into the deck as much right now because they're a little bit uneasy with the way that it's set up. So I do think that that, I think that that's a factor that'll matter.
So you kind of answered my question because I think there's two separate issues is whether the space you're in right now is adequate or whether it's just the issue that it's downtown. Because I think it's, to piggyback off what you said, it's, there's the deck, which undoubtedly provides a huge service, but then there's also the Salvation Army. The Ridge, we have a psychiatric walk-in clinic that serves about thirty people a day. Better Together, family healthcare, there's Salvation, so many different places downtown. So if you move the deck, it's, it's, there's still a huge population of unhoused people and services downtown. And so it's always been curious to me why everything is surrounding one business instead of correct what to do with, with the population as a whole and how to serve them better. So my, my question really is, is there something in your current space that could just be modified to make it, to salvage it, to serve you better? Or is the space just unusable for what you need it for?
I'm, I'm assuming that it would cost probably far too much to do, you know, what we need to do to that building. Another part of it is that it's, it has three floors. So it's been really difficult to try to staff that many floors. That's, that's a strain on our budget, no doubt. For example, our laundry services, showers and lockers are all in the lowest level. Most service provision and meeting with our partners happens on the main level. And so of course we have to have staff in, in both of those. Plus we're trying to see outside because we know that sometimes what happens in the deck can spill out onto the streets and we really want to manage that and be good neighbors. It's been really hard for us to be as good of a neighbor as we want to be because we can't see what's happening outside our windows. So the, I don't know how tall or how high the windows are on that main floor, but they've got it, I mean, they've got to be six or seven feet in the air. I can't see out there, I know that. So there's just physical attributes that we, we really need to change and I don't know if this building would accommodate that. Additionally, I, I think that somebody mentioned like the elephant in the room or whatever. So we have things that happen downtown that are incredibly aggravating. And I understand businesses that are really frustrated and are just plain sick of what's happening. We do have some folks who behave badly downtown. And I believe that they're still in crisis. It's hard to look at them and see a crisis. It's hard to look at them and see the trauma they've experienced. But their, their behavior is stemming directly from what they've experienced. They have a lot of reasons not to give one crap what's happening around them because I don't think anybody gives one crap about them. I'm not saying that gives them an excuse, it doesn't. It doesn't give them a right to behave the way that they behave sometimes. But we as a community have some decisions to make when it comes to people's behavior in every single neighborhood in our community. Because I see things happening in every single neighborhood, whether it's people losing things off their front stoop or whatever the case is. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we do, I do get why businesses are frustrated. I think that there are a number of things we can do to respond differently and more effectively. And eventually I hope that we can put the location of the deck behind us so that we can decide what we're going to do about the issues that are going to continue to plague us regardless of where the deck is.
I just want to say I'm so thankful for all of the work that all of you do. I am curious about the weekend emergency services and if there would be consideration, no matter what the timeline is, for moving the engagement center, will there be weekend services available for people? Because when there has not been, people don't stop being homeless on the weekend. They're still homeless on Saturday if they were homeless on Friday. And I'm on the board of Churches United and I know that there is a lot more traffic at Churches United and serving a lot more guests over the weekend since there has not been weekend services. So I'm wondering if there will be consideration for adding that back.
I would love to. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Hi again. Olivia, Fargo resident. I just have some more questions. You said you wanted it to be welcoming in the building compared to the current one, but I don't understand what could be more welcoming about the buildings I'm seeing and the distance away from them, especially the one, the 2001 address by the railroad tracks. What I'm hearing is it doesn't, it's a faraway walk, especially for folks who are disabled. That is going to further detriment their life. But that doesn't seem very welcoming to me, especially with all of the other things that are going on in downtown. Like there have been pop-up haircuts and everything in Broadway Square. I feel like people would be less apt to set up near these other locations. I, I don't, I don't know what could be more welcoming than the current location. And on that note, Brenda had said that you all received some private donations to help move the deck. And I'm just kind of curious why those donations aren't being used to just revitalize the current one, maybe knock a wall down if that's the issue, or close off the top floor entirely if you're using the bottom two? Because if you can't staff seven days a week, maybe that should be the primary concern right now because like she just said, they don't stop being homeless on the weekend. They still need services. So I feel like that should be a priority. And I'm just kind of curious why you don't use those funds to better this building or staff every day of the week. Thanks.
Started this journey, we wanted to figure out what's going on in the community. And part of it is all the nonprofits, all the people that are involved in this space. This really was a meeting tonight to kind of get a neighborhood, what neighborhoods don't want it in their space or what don't you want. So oftentimes when you do Gladys Ray, we had a meeting with the neighborhood and people told us what they wanted or didn't want it. That's part of what we're trying to figure out tonight. The idea is the present location doesn't work real well, it's three stories. So we're trying to improve that experience, but we're also trying to bring other nonprofits in to help us. We're also looking at the Rids. We're also looking at other people, there are other people can help us serve this mission. The idea is not necessarily to grow it, but we're two hundred and sixty thousand people in our community right now. Part of it grows because of that. But what do you do about that? And the idea and all the outlines that we looked at with Jan is we have to make a space that's easier to work in and not take as much people. Three county commissioners are here tonight. The county has taken an interest in us. They're actually supporting the deck. They're helping us out with some salary coverage this year as well. The state gave us to four hundred thousand to help us out as well. Not four hundred, it was, how much was it, Jan? Two hundred thousand? Just as I recall, anyway. We asked the state for three million. We didn't get the three million, but we anticipate working with the governor and working with Pat Trainer that we can get the state more involved. Because what has to happen is we have addiction issues, we have people who have mental health issues. We all have to work together to solve this, or solve the problem of taking care of our people because they're our people. Seventy percent of the people who are around this area, thirty percent are from elsewhere. But a lot of people come to Fargo for a job. They come to this area for something that might happen. The hope is with Jan, or what Brenda is trying to do is actually some type of action in the next three months in which we'll move to a new space by November. The idea is to present it to the commissioners and say, one, do you want to move? And two, if you want to move, where do you want to move? So that is the thing we're trying to do. With the county, what we're trying to work is how can the county help us out? These are people in your, in your community as well that have difficulties. So all of this is set up, we thought tonight would be more like what neighbors could come out, daycare centers, different people. I don't want them in my neighborhood or I don't want something else. What we got was a lot of support. A lot of people talked about issues that have happened with people and we want to continue to do those things. Because you're exactly right, maybe if we had services, your mother would be alive today, right? I mean, if we have those kinds of things, sometimes that will happen. And if we don't think addictions throughout our community, it's all over in our community. We know that. And we have people who have needs and need to be helped. So this was a good deal to have everybody here. Brenda, I don't know what else you want to get done tonight? Do you want any further discussion or what is it you wanted to finish?
Well, I think you're getting ready to wrap up. We do have staff that will be available also. We have the room till seven. I can take a couple of quick, we can take a couple more questions and then we are ending it at around six thirty and we'll be around. And then I think we also have some papers. So if you weren't able to connect or want someone to reach out to you, please leave your name and number and we'll have someone reach out to you also.
Can you hear me? Anyway, one of the questions or concerns that I have is that, you know, the services and the people are located in the best possible place right now. My biggest concern is that the more you push homeless people away and the more that it become, they become invisible, then no one seems to care anymore because they're not visible. So if you take away the visibility of people who need to be housed, then everybody thinks everything's fine. We don't have to do anything about it. And so I think it is truly a major problem for not only our community, communities across the nation, that we really need to find more permanent solutions so that people aren't falling through the cracks. And so if you make them invisible by pushing them farther and further away, that, that's just perpetuating the problem. And so, you know, if somebody doesn't like them in their neighborhood, you move them to another neighborhood. And it's like, well, why don't we come up with a better solution than just moving people around and pushing the problem away? And, and I don't mean the people are the problem. There are some societal issues I think that foster these problems. And those need to be addressed. That's the principal thing we need to do. Thank you.
Hi, my name is KJ. A lot of folk, I've got two things. One, a lot of folks have brought up public transit and the need for there to be a stop nearby, but nobody's talked about the fact that they just greatly increased fare. And as somebody who lives in poverty, I myself am not going to be able to afford it. Likewise, walking in the winter, it's already hard when it's warm out, it's already hard when it's cold, but I have, I'm not allowed to get my license for medical reasons. And so I've had to walk, I've had to bus. The crosswalks will have three to four foot piles of snow in front of them. What about our unhoused neighbors in wheelchairs? What about others who use mobility aids? Like we have to climb over snow piles. Having to do that for over thirty-plus minutes doesn't seem conducive to me. Another thing, none of these are in the preferred area. With that, on the website that you guys had about this, there was a video from deck staff themselves talking about why it was so important that the deck be where it's at and downtown. I understand that the building is reportedly not great for what you want right now, but then wouldn't it be better to wait until there is something in the preferred area to be able to continue to serve people where they're at, which was something that was noted multiple times? So I just feel like there is a contradiction in what's being said. And if it's so important for it to stay downtown, I don't understand why locations so far away from that are being considered. So I'd just like a little more clarity on that.
So I think, you know, these are the sites that have the square footage that we're looking at and could allow space for all of our programs. We've, we've talked about some of the, the nonprofits and the program, the different programs we offer, but we just don't have enough space. So even if we're open five days a week, they may only be in there one or two because that's what the space allows. So, so that's why we've been looking at larger buildings. I understand the Blues Preferred, but unfortunately the amount, the number of a larger size building footprint, a main footprint are few and far in there. So that's really why you end up kind of on that fringe area. So that's, those are the sites that are available today and those are the sites we've looked at.
On that note, I know that you guys have said you've worked with Bloomberg. Is the, is the pace an issue because of like needing to find a place now because we've overgrown the deck and we're just in that much of a need? Or are we also facing that we won't be getting the funding if we don't do something on the timeline that Bloomberg has maybe set out to put for us on that?
She has a magic touch for that microphone. Every time I touch it, it flashes at me. The Bloomberg has not set the timeline. And so, you know, again, I'll reiterate, we started the process last Monday. We want to have an open house. If, if it slows down a little bit, if that's, the conversation keeps going, that may be the direction we go. So we will be talking to commissioners and the mayor and talking at the meetings and see what direction they want to go. We'll be taking the feedback we received tonight forward to them and see how we do want to proceed forward. If we are going to relocate it today, these would be three sites we evaluate. And so that's really where we're sitting at this spot in time. And so a year from now, that could change. One of the things we are looking at is if we can get a more operationally, more efficient site set up. We also have legislation in another two years. If we can show what we can do with a better, more efficient space, maybe that can help us in the next legislative session. So there are some reasons why, why we're looking now is how can we show what we can do? It's six thirty, so I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I want to thank everyone for, upfront for taking time out of their day. I want to thank everyone for, upfront, for taking time out of their day to be here. And you should have, all have QRQC codes on your paper that you can put in your preferred alternative. And then also, we'll have some information if you want one of our members to reach out to you. So what I would say is, the mayor, there has to be a vote. There has been no vote at City Commission yet. And so depending on how discussion goes at City Commission, will determine how fast or how slow it moves. We just, we can finish, we can answer some more questions. We have about 30 more minutes in the room, so we can answer questions. This part, we're done with question and answers now. But we're happy to stick around and have further conversations with you.